In a town fifty-eight thousand strong, there lived a foreigner. He was a Jewish man from the ocean. Yet, he traveled to a land with no water to find a new life. He arrived upon plains so big, you could only call it "the middle of nowhere." Now, live from a land so vast, this is his cast.
Oh, the humanity...
Cowboys, cowgirls, dudes, married, farmers, villagers. This is the Middle of Nowhere Cast with your host, Robbie.
So, Melanie, can I?
Yes.
Who?
Yes. Thank you for pronouncing my name.
Uh, yes, of course. I did my research, yes.
You did?
Yes. Um, the Google, you know. Trying to, trying to keep things locked.
How do they know how to pronounce it?
Well, you know how to pronounce it. On a video you did for Intermountain Health, where you talked about midwifery. Pretty sure it was you. Looks like the woman sitting in front of me, I don't know. So, I don't know, anyway, that's where I got Connell from.
Okay.
Yes. So, running for school board?
Yes.
Tell me about it.
Oh, gosh. It's probably been the last couple of years, um, more concerned about our nation and how, you know, you see the pretty extreme in other states. And wanting to really be more aware to make sure things don't go to that extreme here.
What do you mean by that?
Um, like, the worst is school boards, um, and schools, school districts, allowing, um, the mutilation of children in regards to the whole gender confusion things.
Cool, jumping right into it, I like it.
Jumping right into it.
Let's jump right into it.
It just, you know, it's, it's a lot. Um, so, so knowing, I mean, I'm very passionate about, um, whose children are they?
Yes.
You know what I'm saying? It's like parental rights is a bedrock foundational thing that should never change, ever.
Right.
Ever. Um, working as, I'm a therapist. I, I never override the parents', you know, right to choose for their children. We collaborate, I give recommendations, I, you know, but I always honor the fact of whose child is this, you know?
Yes.
And stuff, so even, you know, um, yeah, it's just one of those deals. You don't, we have never, um, had a child at a doctor's office and, and didn't ask the, the parent, "Is it okay that I, they receive this care?" Or they get that this happening, or, and it slowly started happening that way, um, such that we're like, "Is that okay?" You know, condoms without parents, you know what I'm saying? Those kinds of things, those kinds of issues.
Oh, this is cool, alright, yeah.
Oh, my gosh, I know, sorry.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 let's get into it. Hold on, I just gotta make sure I turn my microphone on, I did, okay.
Okay, good. Um, but anyway, you know, some of those things I understand. I remember being, you know, kind of absolutely shocked when I worked at WBI and found out there's a law that said I have to get the child's consent to be able to talk to the parent about drugs and alcohol use. I was, I was shocked. And as I thought about that and, and dialogued with people about that, the rationale is they, they likely won't talk to you about their drug and alcohol use.
I could see that.
Right, so I, so that, me too, me too. So then I'm like, "Okay." So they, you just strategize around those kinds of things to still honor the parents. Um, but there's a line, there's gotta be a line. So you don't like start surgeries when a parent is unaware.
What states could you, could, could a minor get gender-affirming surgery?
My understanding is California is one of those states.
Yeah.
I don't know all of the states, I just know it's been this up-in-arms thing. A lot of teenagers are getting these hormone therapies and, you know, the like.
Well, I actually, this is, it's an interesting point that you bring up first and foremost, because I was having a debate with my brother about this the other day. And we were, we, we both are on the same page. Why, we probably should slow down a little bit when it comes to this? Like, the United States is an outlier in that if you think of all the historically progressive countries, like Sweden, Denmark, UK over there and everything, they've actually pulled back on all this gender transformation stuff. The United States seems to be the only ones plowing ahead into the unknown. Me and my brother are wondering about this, but we looked up the numbers. There has been a fifty percent increase in gender-affirming surgeries, or whatever you wanna call it, since 2019, which is pretty startling, I think.
Yeah.
The overall number of people getting these surgeries is only twelve hundred. So it did jump fifty percent up from like six hundred something to twelve hundred something, but to me, I don't see a lot of people actually dealing with this. I mean, if you look at forty million in the age bracket that we're talking about, twelve hundred doesn't seem like a lot.
Right, so, so to me, it's just one of those deals of I, like I said, it's what we're hearing outside of here. I didn't know the numbers in that regard, but, but just enough alarm that I'm like, "Okay, it's probably pretty important that we pay attention." The other reason I did, I, uh, I just started kind of watching the, um, what we need to do in this community. I was watching, um, one of the online, uh, Natrona County School Boards. Um, and some gentleman was up there, and he's in my profession. He said, "I've been in this profession fifty years." I don't remember his name, but thirty in this community. And he says, "I've never had these kinds of, these things." Like, say, say the, the concern of some, which is some of the pornographic or more sexually explicit things in our libraries.
What, like what?
Um, I, I don't know the titles, I just know that's why.
That's just what he was saying.
That's, yeah, I've never known somebody, you know, feeling abused or harmed by seeing this in the library, or abused or harmed by these kind of, of topics in the classroom. Like, um, you know, all the gender confusion, all the, um, pressure for "What sex are you?", "What are you?", you know, da-da-da. Um, so, I was just like, "Okay." As far as I can tell, we've only really been even looking at this for fifteen years. You know, where this is, again, such a, a big thing. And I started seeing it when I started in WBI at, uh, in 2010.
WBI is?
Um, Wyoming Behavioral Institute.
That's right, okay, cool.
And I worked on the, the acute unit for adolescents. And, um, it wasn't a lot, but I was just starting to see, um, I would call it peer pressure, to be honest with you, because...
Peer pressure to be?
Uh, well, it, let me just say, in general, peer pressure we know is a thing. And it's been a thing probably even my parents. There was peer pressure for drinking.
Yup.
In my generation, peer pressure for drinking, peer pressure for sex, peer pressure for being thin, peer pressure for a lot of, you know, those kinds of things, right? And, and so, the, the feeling I had when I'm talking to these kids is, um, it almost just felt like the, the now version of peer pressure with the whole, you know...
Is to be gay?
Well, or to anything, "What are you?", like this peer pressure to know what I am.
Right, why, yeah, right, 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 okay.
Do you see what I'm saying? So, so I had this little gal that I...
Is that a bad thing, though, for children to figure out who they are?
I think that developmentally, it's a lot for, like, it, that's not necessarily something they have to be sure about.
Sure, I get you, yeah.
I mean, to me, especially if you're gonna do surgeries and hormones and da-da-da, you know?
Well, but I mean, if I'm getting a surgery beforehand, I would like, let's say my kid wants to get a surgery. Beforehand, I would want them to make sure that they have good grasp on who they are. You know what I mean, like?
And who does before they're, even in their twenties.
Yeah, right, I'm twenty-six, I'm still figuring it out. So I, I get your point there.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, like you even said, "Maybe let's just slow down." Maybe let's just slow down. Let's be careful. And I've even had other people in my profession saying that they're starting to go, "Okay, I don't necessarily..." Like, especially if you're not gonna bring the parents in. Especially if you're gonna bring the parents in. It's like later, that's a potential lawsuit waiting to happen. So that's another concern I would have for the school board. We are a great community. Do we really want to risk? Because we're, and I don't know what they're doing in that arena, to be honest with you. I just wanna be a part of watching and watch care.
Well, speaking of bringing the parents in, the new House Bill 190 that just passed, the Wyoming Senate, I think it was, and the House, that, that actually is gonna mandate parental care from schools.
Right.
Yes.
Right, so, so, exactly, so I think that, I mean...
So is it, in your view, is that, was that a good or a bad bill?
Gosh, I can, I, again, it's so new, I wanna watch it. And I love that they, that our state is honoring the fact that we, um, as parents, need to be able to be a part of all the goings-on of their children. And so, the only reason I hesitate on "is it a good thing" is because I also know very responsible and caring teachers that are feeling stressed. You know, 'cause there is that line of, of, it's kinda like what I was talking about with the whole drugs and alcohol, they won't talk to us if, if they know, we'll go directly to the parent, right?
Yes.
Um, and so, I think it's just one of those deals. Let me just say, the main thing, I, and I, I'm kind of not thrilled that maybe it went completely to this gender thing, I just as a, as an extreme of what I, got me to start thinking about running for school board. But the main thing I'm really feeling passionate about, um, running is, why I'm feeling that passionate about running is I, being a mental health professional and the mental health crisis that we're in, in our country, in our community, in our district, um, you know, nobody's all things to all people. And so, is there someone with that expertise on the board that can wa, you know, again, have watch care over that area? And they've, they've, you know, that's their strength. So that's, that's my offering, you know, it's one of my, it's my main thing. You know, I've been in private practice for twenty-plus years, um, WBI for three more, you know, which is great, because that's where the extreme stuff is, right? The suicidal, the homicidal, or the psychotic. And so, um, just feeling like, you know, let's, as a district, navigate, what does all that need to look like so that everyone is safe, cared for, you know, et cetera?
Well, a, a big piece of that is critical thinking, isn't it, don't you think?
Mm-hmm.
Or, and, and what, when, as, you, you're a licensed therapist, when, when do we start teaching our kids critical thinking skills? When does that come into play?
Hopefully when they're at two.
Two, starting at two?
I did, I did. I, I, age-appropriate, age-appropriate, um, you know, thinking skills. And I, one of the things I was super proud of, all my kids went through Natrona County District. I have four boys, they all went through. And my two older ones, um, their sixth grade teacher said, "Man, if you give those boys a tough question, they give you a tough answer."
There you go, I like it.
I am like so passionate about that. Yes, teach them critical thinking skills. In fact, that's one of the ways I answered one of the, I think, the Oil City News questionnaires, is, um, I don't have a problem with some of the things we dialogue about in the school system if we're not pushing one direction or the other. If, if we're using that to teach the critical thinking skills, the reasoning skills, the, um, check-in with yourself and your values skills. You know, all, all those kinds of deals where you're learning to respectfully, uh, debate a, a position on the other side.
So, but as it stands right now, though, if you're talking about, uh, gender identity and sexual orientation, that's, that's off the table completely now. So is that, is that a good thing, is that a bad thing? How do we?
As far as not dialoguing in the school system about that? Is that what that law also, the statute is? I read the whole law and I didn't get that.
The law says, um, that you could, teachers or other individuals are not allowed to instruct at all on gender, uh, identity or sexual orientation in the classroom.
That's so interesting, I read through that law and missed that part.
Yeah, I think it was, it was like the first sentence in there, or one of the. I'm not sure, but how do you, how do you reconcile? It seems like there's dissonance there with the wanting to teach our kids critical thinking and getting them exposed to that, but then...
But you could do that with any other topic. So that, to me, the sexual stuff is so based in morality. Leave that to the families and, and what, you know, not the school to help. Aside from basic agreement, like be kind, be respectful, be honoring of somebody who might, you know, believe differently than you, um, look differently than you, um, uh, you know, whether it's political, religious, whatever. Teach those basic morality things. Um, the common welfare, you know, the general welfare that our constitution talks about.
Hmm.
You know?
I guess, well, I, not, not, not to push it, I guess, but I, I'm still having, this is just me thinking about all this stuff, I'm, I'm, it seems like it's, it's not fair that you would be allowed to talk about heterosexual relationships in a classroom, but you cannot talk about homosexual relationships in a classroom anymore. How is that right? If we're treating everybody equal, if we're treating everybody with compassion, why, as, as you, as you may be on school board, why is it gonna be the school board's position that, you know what, we actually, two men together, stay away from it, it's bad news, can't do that. Like, and at what age can we start exposing our children to that? 'Cause we have eighteen-year-old high school seniors? They seem old enough to me, I think, right? I don't, what, what do you think?
Well, again, but it's based in that morality issue that there's so many people that are polar opposites. So that just happens to be one of them. And since we're in this, um, place where we are, um, community of polar opposites, um, I don't have any problem saying, um, "Some people believe this, some people believe that", you know? So I don't know if the law really is, is saying that, 'cause again, I, I didn't see it, read it that way. But, um, but bottom line, I do feel like it's important to say, as a general rule, if we are, for instance, Casper, Wyoming, what are we gonna do with smoking? It's, to me, it's that. It's like, if it's, if it's, um, making a choice for someone else, and in this case, it's morality, if it, if it has to do with, um, sexual, what you do with your body.
Right, that's what, so whose choice is that? Like, what you said, making a choice?
That it's morality? Oh, I was, so, I interrupted myself. So, so let's go into what we do as a, a city.
Mm-hmm.
There was laws to stop smoking in public. Well, why did we do that?
Yes.
Because that smoke made a choice for another person, right?
Yes, right.
And so, if a family is over here and, um, and, and their, their moral values is purity, like, "We, we want you to wait till you're married, we're trying to teach you that." If you go to this public school setting and it's, you know, a whole array of morality that's being pushed, or not pushed, or whatever, that can confuse the issue considerably. So to me, you just, you just respect the fact that we all land in different places and, um, and we're kind, you know? So even if that bit of information comes up, you don't treat somebody poorly about it, 'cause that's not your moral base, nor do you judge the other person, 'cause it's, it is, you know?
But why, why would you want to, uh, limit kids and not give them those options so they could think about it and make the decision for themselves?
Because I think that's the parent's job.
But, okay, yeah, that's fair enough.
I think it's the parent's job.
That's fair enough. What if the parent, what would you say to a household in which a kid's only be, being given by the parents one narrow viewpoint?
That's their choice. It's their choice. It's their kid. So, so whether I agree with that or not, which you could probably glean, I like my kids to be able to think through a number of different controversial, hard topics, right?
Yeah.
Um, so I wouldn't necessarily land there. But if a parent does land there, that's their right as a parent to give them this one view, and then when you're an adult, you can think of this other view. We, it's not ours to decide whether that's wise or not. It's, it's that parent's decision.
Well, isn't, isn't it our choice to decide, or your choice to decide if it's wise or not? A, a, as school board, you'd be in charge of the education of everybody.
I would then be advocating for the parents' rights to say, "This is, this is too ni, too narrow of a topic to, to even wrestle with." It's like, leave that to the family.
Well, where do you draw the line?
That's a good question.
I guess, and why does it, that's, I guess that's what we're trying to figure out.
That's the difficulty, isn't it?
Why does it feel to me that sometimes we choose to draw the line on traditional Christian values and subjects that breach what the Bible says and with religious undertones? You know what I'm saying? Like, it feels like all the topics that we say parents should, nobody's saying we can't teach our kids algebra, you know what I mean?
Right, because algebra's not a moral, moral topic. It's an intellectual topic, which is the whole idea of the school system. You know, we're teaching math, we're teaching reading, we're teaching writing, we're teaching history, hopefully accurately.
That's, yeah, I did wanna talk about that too, yeah. It's because, um, you weren't at the library discussion...
I was not able to, I was gone on a five-week trip.
Five-week trip?
Yeah, that was a lot.
So, okay, yeah, I was go, I was wondering why, 'cause I'm trying to do my research, like I said, learning how to pronounce everybody's names, I didn't see there. So, but they asked a question to the board, "What do we want, when the kids leave high school, what do we wanna teach them?", right? And everybody just gives some, like, "Prepare them for their next chapter of life."
Too general.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I thought so. I, why, why, why did not one of the ten people up on stage say, "We should teach kids about Civil War? We should teach kids about, you know, the formation of Wyoming? How Casper got to be here?", like, it seems like...
Our nation, how did our nation form?
Mm-hmm.
You know, accurately. So, so, yeah, history, but, but the basics, reading, writing, arithmetic, right? But why did we start a school system to teach intellectual things, not moral things? Moral is for the family, and if the family chooses for that to be, uh, augmented by churches or, uh, volunteerism, which I love. I mean, I'm not opposed to that even coming into the schools, but, but, because again, it's, it's basic, "Let's serve humanity", you know? That's a great general moral. "Let's be kind", that's a great general moral. Let's, let's find out where, you know, an atheist, all the way to those of us who, who, whether it's Christian, or Buddhism, or whatever, whatever religious, you know, place you land, um, what do we all have in common when it comes to morals?
Yeah.
That's where I feel like we need to be very, that's the gauge, that's the gauge. And that way, I land on, "I'm honoring this person and this person, and we're not bringing the fight to the school system." In fact, we're teaching the kids to say, "Hey, this is, how beautiful, like, if we could teach, this is how we learn to be Americans." In the sense that we are a melting pot of all sorts of flavors of belief, you know, colors of skin, all the things.
Yes.
And we are learning to respect and honor one another, even if we vastly disagree.
I agree that, uh, yeah, respecting and honoring everybody, being kind, that's all good stuff. Now, I guess, direct question then. On a topic of sexual education, that seems like a pretty morally charged thing. But it has, we've seen that kids who get sexual education are safer, they have less unplanned pregnancies, don't contract as many STDs and all that kind of stuff.
Teach the biology.
Teach the biology?
That, that's why, because they're teaching the biology of what happens in our bodies if we do these other things, or, you know, we choose this, this, or this, or this, then we're putting our bodies at risk. But then, here's the deal.
Yeah.
That's where, and, and I think this is probably still in, in, in case, but that's, again, why I wanna be involved, is, um, make sure that, that parents know what's being taught in that arena, so that, 'cause if it's for the common good, less, less all the things, right?
Yeah, kids are, kids are having sex a lot these days. I think I read that the average age a child loses their virginity is somewhere between fourteen and fifteen now. So that is high school age, so should we be teaching kids about that? And what's gonna happen and stuff, how to stay safe?
Yeah, that's general scientific biology. Um, and, but then let the parents know what's being taught.
Of course, yeah.
And then, if they wanna opt the kid out for, for whatever reason, they're their choice, then they can do so.
So, but then could, could a parent opt out of something else? Like, could a parent opt their kid out of bi, of physics if they wanted to?
So...
Keep talking, I gotta reset this camera thing here.
Um, I would say, um, just like human, you know, if I have, if I opt out of science, or biology, or history, or math, and you're not meeting the criteria that is, is necessary to graduate, of course they could opt them out, but then the kid might not graduate.
So, but it's, I guess...
That, that, what you're speaking of is not a core, "This is what a kid needs to be able to get a diploma and show that they have basic", not, not even basic, maybe even better, hopefully, better than basic. As Americans, we would wanna be able to do our best to, you know, they're talking about the lower scores. We wanna do what we can to help our kids learn those basic things. So, so to me, it's apples and oranges. By, um, biology and math is not sex. And so, therefore, um, if they, if they have their parents', you know, version of what they want them to know about sex, that's not gonna keep them from being a productive, um, member of society and be able to go on to college and be able to do their degrees. You need reading, writing, arithmetic, and history. Okay? You see what I'm saying?
I think I see what you're saying. I think, um, but I, why, why, I get, why do parents know best? And you go inside a school, you see master's degrees, PhDs, and...
I'm not saying they always know best. I'm saying it's their right, it's their children. And who, who's to say, society, aside from when you are being unsafe with that child?
Yeah.
That's when we override parents. When a parent is being, I would probably disagree with ninety percent of, of some other families' parental choices.
Yeah.
It's their choice, it's their child. So, so it's not really a matter of, of why, of saying, "Parent knows best", it's saying, "That's their right." They chose to have that child, they get to choose how they raise that child. We could vastly disagree with it and we don't interfere.
Right. Then why wouldn't you just send your kid to public, a private school then?
A lot of people can't do that, they can't afford it.
Uh, what would you say on the topic of, "Should the money follow the child, or should the money stay in the public school district?"
Um, I don't mind the idea of the money following the child because the parent sowed in the taxes. So, so if, if the, if the government gives a, you know, yeah, "Follow the child, la-la-la", then, then absolutely. You know, somebody asked me that the other day about the charter school that's coming in, and if they don't have to abide by the state's, you know, standards, blah, blah, blah. Um, but they weren't considering the fact that who sowed in the taxes? The parent. So, so it makes sense that the, the, the tax dollars follow the child.
But we, I mean, we all pay taxes on a lot of stuff. Just because you don't use a certain social service, does that mean that the money should get diverted?
Um, I think, again, I have opinions about that too, um, in regards to some things should not be going to taxes. Our tax money should not be going to some things. For these very same reasons I'm talking about today.
Mm-hmm. What about, uh, when it comes to free school lunches, free school breakfasts? Tax dollars go to that, that's okay? And for you?
Sure. I mean, in the sense of, we care for, I, I'm a strong proponent of the strong, um, you know, help the weak. So if you've got somebody that, that cannot afford school lunch, then that just makes sense to help them make sure they get a lunch, make sure the kid eats, because the kid's not gonna learn, the kid does not eat. The kid is not gonna learn, you know, if a lot of different basic needs are not being met. So, I mean, that, that's the hard thing about being a community, isn't it? So that's why, again, a big part of things is, let's, let's start, let's go back to, not let's start, let's go back to, let's respectfully dialogue about these issues of, you know, "Well, what about school lunch? Well, what about homosexuality? Well, what about?", you know, like, you're asking all sorts of hard questions, and...
That's what I'm here for.
Right, but, but what's happening is then we get so lit up. I don't think we need to get lit up. It's like, "Oh, good question, let me think about that."
But then why, it feels like, sorry to interrupt you. It feels like, I, I don't know why we keep falling back here, I have a lot of stuff to talk about. But on the, on the subject of teaching about homosexuality, sexual orientation, it feels like the law is pretty antagonistic. It's getting lit up about we can't even have a dialogue about that anymore.
Well, and, and maybe it needs to be outside of the school system so the kids can just learn reading, writing, and arithmetic, and history, and, and let's do this out here.
Well, I get that, but on a certain level, thirty percent of the generation currently in school identifies as some member, oh, it's queer, as some member of the LGBTQ community. So if one-third of all of the kids are going to go through something, don't you think that's a worthwhile thing to be talking about them with?
Or we talk about the peer pressure and stop pressuring the kids and each other to decide? 'Cause I think some of them are deciding simply because, "I want you to like me, and you're now asking me what I am." I never even thought of that. I can't tell you how many kids I've worked with that, "I don't know what I am", and it freaks them... that, I don't know what I am, and, and it freaks them out, they, they're scared, they, and then sometimes they will make a decision simply because they, they want you to like them, and so that, is that possible, that's where we got the thirty percent? I, very likely.
There has been an increase, if you look at your generation, I, I'm assuming Gen Z, Gen X, Gen Z, Gen Z, there we go. Gen X, uh, uh, okay, Gen X, how's it, what was it, eleven percent of Gen X versus thirty percent of Gen Z? What would you say to the child that is questioning stuff inside their own, on, on their own? Now, they're not getting it from school, obviously, cause it's illegal, they're not getting it.
They have so far, because it just became illegal.
Well, yeah, okay, fair enough, fair enough, okay, so this, i- i- if they're not gonna get it from school, they live in a traditional household, don't talk about that stuff either. Where does that kid go, what resource do they have, we're gonna leave some people behind, why is, how do you reconcile the kids we're gonna leave behind versus the kids we're now not, just, we're gonna give them the, the path of least resistance, you don't have to deal with it at all?
I think leave it to the parents to figure, help them figure that out, because, and that's gonna be the case for so many different things. Uh, no parent is gonna have every answer, but it's still up to them to help their kids figure that out. Um, the, kids are resourceful, they'll talk, if, if it's really their, them, they'll start asking peers or whatever. Let's just, you know, it doesn't have to be taught in the schools necessarily, it's on the internet, blah, 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 I mean, there's that, you know, you've got homeschooled kids in the scenario you've just talked about, and it's still, they find the answers, they find um, the peers to talk, they find therapy, or they find whatever they need. Because, um, so it's not just a, a, a public school issue, it's, it's hitting everywhere because it's an internet issue, really. Um, I had a thought about, oh, I was just gonna tell you, again, this is, uh, an example of what I, I worry about, I don't know that's happening, but it, it stands to reason that it's likely. When I was in sixth grade and I wanted Jenny to like me, and Jenny, who is beautiful and popular, starts saying, I'm fat. And so I'm like, oh, me too, you know what I'm saying? Because that's the developmental age and stage of junior high and high school. I ended up with an eleven year eating disorder. Because of that kind of developmental stage, that didn't happen because Jenny made me have an eating disorder. That happened because my developmental age and stage of development um, cared what my peers thought, embraced a line of thinking through no fault of hers. And, and ended up with a problem, so that's my concern, is all these kids are being asked all this stuff, that, that to be, I believe most wouldn't even be asking it, you know, there, there, there's some of it stirring up or whatever, but I think that, that the level it's gone to worries me.
So, you think, are, are kids choosing to be gay because they're being exposed to this stuff?
Let me just say, I didn't choose to have an eating disorder, and so, I, if I just, oh yeah, I am this.
So they're, they're for, getting forced to be gay?
I don't know, I don't, no, I don't think so, no, I don't think forced to, no, I think the developmental age and stage of wanting to be like.
Ah, I see.
And so if we could just get that distraction, uh, out of the arena, and focus, keep, get the main thing back to the main thing, which is we even have public schools for reading, writing, arithmetic, history. Basic learning that are common to every human being in America. And that I, and then find resourcing that is, you know, it's not like, okay, we noticed this person has these questions. Okay, let's talk to the parents, can we, you know, this is some, these are your resources, and maybe it's, we have the gamut of, of varying, um, ideologies, if you will, that, and then the parent can then choose what they do to help their child in that arena. And I don't care if it's this sexuality aspect of things, or, um, they have anxiety, or they, um, any number of things, you know, did poverty, and they, they, we were helping them figure out how to be able to access things like, you know, a lot of the general public hand in the student body, like. Yeah, let's figure it out for them so that they can be in this awesome environment and have what they need.
So, let's talk about history then, what do you think about critical race theory as a method to teach American history?
I am not a supporter of that.
Why not?
I think it supports an, uh, an ideology that's not true.
Can you talk more about that?
Yeah, I think we have a history of racism. Um, and I think we have learned from it. And I'm, I'm one, I mean, just, many are, are being accused of being racist simply because they are Christian, or they are, um, you know, in a scenario, just simply because we're white, for goodness gracious. I think that's ridiculous, you know, that because we have white skin, we are automatic racists or whatever. So, critical race theory is try, I think a lot of the movement is basically, uh, trying to get us to believe we're racist when there may still be people that are racist, but to generally say as a society we are, I just say is absolute ridiculous, it is not, I've, I've, I, I could honestly say I don't even know one. I don't know one racist, I know a lot of people. And every person I know is a respecter of all colors.
I know a few racist people.
And I, and I believe they exist.
Oh, they exist.
I do believe.
They're fun to drink with.
And I'm not saying they don't exist. I'm saying it's not to the level that, that, that line of thinking is trying to get people in general to believe we are.
How do you, how, how do you, how would we go about teaching about the oppression historically? And throughout today, is there still oppression today?
And, 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 and reverse racism, reverse oppression, just because it's like.
Talk about that, what is, I've never really understood what reverse racism is, what is it?
Well, it's so interesting, cause my husband went to school, um, as an eighteen year old man, you know, young man. And, um, he was constantly kinda getting accused of being the oppressor in one way, shape, or form, simply because he was white. And he's like, he's, he's actually one of the, the kindest, gentlest people you know, you would know, and, and he's always, as an eighteen year old man, going, I didn't do it, you know, and he didn't, he's, you know, it's, so there's this idea of, um, because white men in history, and by the way, not all.
No, yeah, very, very few white people on slaves, this is true.
That's why we had the, the civil war, right, because not all white people were racist, and by the way, the first slaves in America were white. They were Irish.
Irish people always get it rough.
So, so the point being, it's, I almost, yeah, I, I, I think, I think it's, yes, teach it accurately. We have had racism, this is what happened, this is how slaves were treated, this is who the slaves were. This is what we as a nation did to abolish, uh, slavery.
Good thing.
You know, um, but we've, uh, another example of, um, reverse then is, is the, um, yeah, what, what is the, the equal?
Equality versus equity?
The, the DEI, uh, things, trends, so, so then you get a, a person of, of gender or color in that position simply because you have to have so many. And then there, I, I'm all about merit.
Yeah, let's do it.
Yeah, get, get into that position based on merit, and I, I'm excited, I have Asian, I have Asian relatives that I think are amazing, and I'm excited, you know, for my little short Asian female engineered niece, engineered niece that is rocking it, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
Wonderful, merit, she's get, she's there because of merit, and I love that.
What would you say to somebody, not on, as much on the DEI stance, but what would you say to somebody who says that critical race theory is necessary to help catch minorities back up, because they're not even put in positions where they can have the merit to succeed?
They are, that's just such, in my opinion.
Yeah, no.
That people of color have earned their way into positions that are wonderful, and I see a lot of, of things on social media where, um, our, uh, African American, uh, citizens are like, they're upset about CRT, to be honest with you, because they are doing well, and they, they have done, and, and there are the, those that aren't, so are their white people that aren't, it's called, you know, poverty, whatever, 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 you know? So, yeah, as a general humanity, let's help that, any color, a person that is struggling, that needs a leg up. But don't categorize it and pigeonhole it as one color, cause it's just not true.
What does the end game look like, if, if, if the people pushing that kinda stuff get their way, where do we end up, why, yeah?
Oh, as far as the CRT person pushed that?
Yeah, like, let's say, let's just say, uh, every school started teaching it, where do you think we end up in five years? Ten years, thirty years?
Maybe I don't wanna know, and maybe that's why I'm running for school board?
There you go.
You know?
Um, alright, let's play a little game here, I've prepared a, a short list, and it's called, should we let them in our schools? I'm gonna say something, and then you say, should we let it in our schools, it's pretty simple, right?
I say, should we let them in our schools?
Mm-hmm, it'll, it'll be clear after the first example, you say yes or no, and then you can give maybe five, five to ten word explanation if you want. Should we let it in our schools, cell phones?
Um, if we do, can we have cellphone garages that they have to check in at the front door, at the door of this, you know what I'm saying?
Okay, yeah, alright.
Should we, should we have them, put them away in each classroom, sure, I think it's a distraction.
Guns?
No, well, who are you talking?
At all, yeah, I guess, if guns should be in schools, who should have them?
Yeah, students should not have them.
Students should not have them, I agree, let's not give fourteen year olds guns. Should anybody, is there room for anybody to have a gun?
Well, I, I mean, obviously, security, that would be a possible good idea in the sense of the, the, the struggles we've had as a nation in school shootings, et cetera. Um, and or, I mean, I, I hate to go to this, but if we have to, then what, I mean, safety is, is utmost. So what, I think as a, as a collaborative, um, group of people, we need to decide what is the safest thing.
Teachers, should they have guns?
I know that's been a thing to, to discuss. I'm not opposed.
Not opposed?
I'm, but I'm, I'm, I'm willing to hear and dialogue about it.
Okay, there we go, open mind, I think I already know the answer to this one, but critical race theory. Okay, uh, free lunches, we touched on it. Uh, the Quran. Condoms.
I don't know, it's in that arena of, of if the parents.
But, the thing, where I get hung up is, individ- family, individual choices, all that, but if condoms are gonna make the kids safer, why are we not doing it?
I'm, I'm not for or against, let's just say that, in, in this respect, because I get both sides.
I know my high school had a, had a condom fairy, that there was just, in the principal's office, there was a bowl off to the side somewhere, nobody asked questions. Do, you know what I mean? And that was helpful, I took a few, I used a few, so, a good thing I did, or else I'd be a dad, so, I don't know.
There you go, yeah, so, so again, I understand both sides of the issue on that one.
Parents?
Should we let parents in the school? Of course.
Okay, there we go, I know, and politics.
Um, yes, uh, again, and, and I, I, this'll be printed in, in both, I think at least one of those papers at Oil City or, uh, Casper Star Tribune, is when we, when we present anything that has sides. Presented as such, one group of people, uh, believe this for these reasons, the opposite believes this for these reasons, and you're using that deal, uh, to help them, again, learn the more important things of reasoning through, looking for data, you know, da, 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 so you're, you're using it mostly to develop that child's ability to reason, debate, think critically, et cetera.
Um, one more question for you, what, should we have confidential resources for kids in schools? That can stay independent of their parents? And that, maybe not for all ages, but at what age would it be a good idea, if at all, to have kids, have somebody at school they can go talk to?
Yeah, I think, um, I mean, obviously, with my field, um, I actually tell my kids that I see, um, I can actually talk to your parents about anything I want, because they are your parents and they have a right to your well-being and your health information. Let's make a deal, is what I do.
Oh, like what, pretend like, pretend like I'm a kid?
Okay, pretend.
Okay, yes, Melanie, I have a few questions.
So I need you to understand that I can talk to your parents about anything, but I also know that you need a safe place to just talk through some things without
I do.
fearing that I would just run to your parent, uh, with that information, so what if we make an agreement? In that I will, um, if you ever say anything that I believe, um, is something your parents probably need to know. What if we make an agreement that I let you know that, and we decide together whether you go talk to them, I go talk to them, because you're, you know, maybe scared to bring it up, or we go talk to them together?
Okay, there we go, yeah, that's actually, that was better than I was expecting, yeah, if you gotta tell them, broker a deal.
Right, and just because that's respectful to them, it's, it's also, do you see how I'm modeling even, yeah, we need to.
Productive conversation.
Yeah, we need to be, uh, we need to have safe places where we dialogue about things and get things figured out. Maybe before we talk to the parent, and that's where that safe adult can do so, um, and then gear them to that conversation in a way that, that they feel like they can.
So, but what if, what, okay, I'm the child now, what if I say, oh, but you just said, I gotta tell your parents about that, and I say, no, no, don't tell them, they're gonna freak out. It's gonna be horrible, they don't like that stuff, I have nobody else to talk to, but they can't know.
Well, in my field, that's the whole reason I exist, you know what I'm saying, so, so unless, again, I feel like they're in danger, um, et cetera, et cetera, then, then no, I don't, I don't, I say, okay, we won't go do that at this point, but. But if it's, if it's something that I feel like in the grand scheme, they, um, are going down a path that would really be harmful to them and or, whether relationally or physically, you know, or emotionally, whatever, um, then I just, that's why it's important to have that relationship to, of trust, et cetera, et cetera, so I help them get there if they need to get there.
Okay, right on.
So I get, it gives them room, you know, they, you know, in the junior high, high school realm, of course, they need more room to figure that out, and you know, it may never be a conversation they have with their parents, but that's up to them as well in some cases, you know, we have all done that, right?
Uh, yeah, yes ma'am.
You know, it's also the natural stage of autonomy, so that's where, again, just knowing what are the, the key issues, and I just think we've stepped over a line on some of those key issues.
Um, alright, so we're out of time, and I know you have a very busy schedule and everything, thank you for talking to me. Can we conclude with, um, I don't know, how do you wanna conclude? Well, I appreciate the conversation, I mean, I don't know if we really need to conclude on anything.
Yeah, well, I, probably just the recap of my, my priorities is, is mostly, you know, just hoping, um, you know, that we can get to a place where we all have a, uh, the ability to have a respectful dialogue about these, you know, topics of the day, and, um, again, offering my uh, experience in the mental health world, um, especially in, in now, I mean, that's funny, cause again, all the questions uh, that I've gotten thus far involve the, the mental health crisis, so, I may not have all the answers for some other things, but I'll offer my strengths and, and be open to learn about the rest of it, so.
Cool, sweet, and where can people vote for you, hopefully?
What do you mean, where can they vote for?
Like city hall, I don't know, just the general, should people be voting, you know, all that good stuff.
If you're a registered voter, you usually know where you go, cause there's a variety of different places where you go to, that you have to vote, like I'm, I vote at Casper College, not everybody does.
Oh, I see, I didn't even know that.
Yeah, yeah, some people vote at the fairgrounds, some people vote, um, at churches, you know, in big, they're big. Some people vote at the fairgrounds, some people vote, um, at churches, you know, in big, the big, um, gymnasiums or whatever and. Crest Hill, I think, used to be, if not still, is a place to vote. Yeah, you, wherever your district is, you go to that.
Gotcha, I gotcha, I gotcha, alright, cool, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Cool, alright, there we goes, sweet, alright, sweet, I like it. Forty-five minutes went by so fast.